Of places of worship to society. Father, we thank you for spring. Thank you for another school year and the progress made in so many areas of our district. Thank you, Father, for our superintendent, her staff, and the board members. We're grateful for the sentinels of the classroom, our teacher staff. Now, for these proceedings tonight, we ask for wisdom beyond knowledge, and may all discussions and decisions be according to your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support. Any discussion? Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schlack?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we're moving on to public comment. For those of you wishing to speak, there are forms in the back. I have one at this time. Melanie Love.
I am here on behalf of the high school band program to bring you information on our upcoming fundraiser. The Hazel Park Band Boosters are holding a golf outing on Saturday, June 1st, at the Riverbank Golf Club in South Lyon. All proceeds from this event will be used directly to benefit the program. The cost for this is $100, and it includes 18 holes, continental breakfast, hot dog lunch, and then a dinner following. We are also looking for personal and corporate sponsors to make this event possible. Everyone in the instrumental music department would like to thank both the board and the members of our community for your continued support of our program. I have packets for...
Okay, great.
Melanie, do you know what the sponsorship price is?
They're in the packet, but I listed a $250 one and a $650.
But if I'm correct, last year you'll take donations for different things too, right? No matter what level?
Yes, they were collecting different donations for raffles and baskets as well with the corporate sponsors.
Does anyone have any questions about this golf event for the Band Boosters? All right, thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
We will work to provide some support here. Okay, if there's no one else wishing to speak, then we will go ahead and move forward to our special order of business, and we have a Jardon presentation.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Croupy. It's nice to be here tonight. I am the new principal at Jardon Vocational School, and I'm really excited to talk to you about just the things that I've been so blessed to witness in the last few months. I have a PowerPoint. I'm not really...oh, there it is. Okay.
Magic.
It is magic. Okay, so, Jardon Vocational School, we basically have two programs. In Jardon, we have a program for the ASD students, and we have a program for Mokai students. All of our students are ages 18 to 26, and we really work on developing our students to engage in the adult world, helping their families to understand where they move to next, and working with outside agencies so that they have those resources moving forward. So, here we talk about work-based learning. They go out into job sites. We have 25 different job sites as of right now, and we are working to build some new and really exciting job sites. My transition coordinator is working with the Detroit Zoo right now to see if we can get some students in there, which will be really neat. Community-based instruction, our students do go out several times a week. They go to grocery stores, they go to the mall, where they really learn how to interact with the community. As far as socialization with peers, we have dances every month, and we welcome back all the alumni from Jardon, so it's a really fun event, and they're themed. That would go with, too, the leisure, recreation, and fitness. We do have a Special Olympics team for basketball, and we're starting a new bocce ball team, which would be...will be really fun, although I'm not so great at bocce ball. Also, the assistive tech and the inter-agency collaboration. So, these were my absolute favorite pictures. If you want to take a look at them, I just think they're so reflective of the energy Jardon has with the students out there, working, they're excited to work, and we have such good contacts with our work sites, that they really embrace our students and work hand-in-hand with them to learn how to be in different types of job sites. As you can see, I've listed as many as I could fit on the page, but there are more. We have three at Beaumont alone. Animal Welfare is really one of the favorites for our students, because they get to work directly with animals and the care of animals. Joy and Fabrics is another really fun one for them. And I also wanted to bring into that that we have the prom closet at Jardon, and we also have the community closet at Jardon. And I can only speak from my personal experience. I have to tell you, when those prom dresses came in, they were so excited, and they organized them all by color, and they did an amazing job. It was very sweet. Okay, so, here you're going to see, we are working in that greenhouse. Jardon has a greenhouse. We just got a big, big shipment of herbs and lettuce, and so we're putting those together right now. We will get our flats of flowers coming in, you know, as the weeks go on. Timing-wise, it's all important, I guess, at this point. We have some succulents, too. So, what the students plan to do, they're working with the high school students right now, and we are going to have a market day, so stay tuned for that, where we're going to...you know, we have a greenhouse that we're going to work with, and they're going to bring in lots and lots of wholesale stuff, so that we can put our word out to the community that we have a greenhouse, and it's great stuff. You see the prom dresses there in the bottom picture? That's a real point of pride for our students, that organization of that prom closet. Also, you see in the picture of what we call a pays lab, and we just had our pays lab put in. It is a lab where students get to work on different work skills, and they're very specific. So, there's building skills, clerical skills, cooking skills, and each different skills in a box, so they take the box, and it's timed, and their goal is to keep improving, getting faster, being able to stand on their feet, and knowing what's expected, be able to do those jobs quickly and correctly. Okay, here's a little picture of our basketball team. They really are rock stars, I have to tell you. They won lots of games this year. Just some points of pride, our students, 98% of them go out into the community at least one time a week. We have, like I said, we have basketball and bocce ball, lots of peer integration opportunities. We are having a spring formal coming up, which all of our students, again, we invite all those alumni to come back. It's a really big deal. We have it at a hall. We have the talent show, the fashion show, student council, themed dances, and these are all things that they really integrate their social skills with, and they're able to really hang out with adults and have fun and enjoy their time, as well as a place where they are learning those work skills. These are our agency partners. I talked a little bit about inter-agency collaboration. So, we work with many, many agencies to really connect our adult learners to the outside community, so that they have those resources lifelong. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
I do. The high school students, you have coming over to work with them, are they volunteers from the high school, or is this something that they do, like, on a weekly basis?
Yeah, that's a really good question. The class that comes over to work with us is a class of special needs students, but they're high school-aged, so those are the students that are working with our students at this time.
That's great. Thank you so much. It was really helpful information, and it's nice to...welcome to being principal here at Jardon.
Thanks.
And we're happy to have you. Anybody else have any other comments?
I'm just glad you got the greenhouse going.
Oh, we're working on it. It's far from done, but we're moving in the right direction.
All right.
Thank you.
And that is a wonderful addition to our team. We're really pleased to have her join our special education team. It really rounded it out, so thank you, and we're glad that you could be here tonight.
Thanks.
All right, we can move on to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as written. Support.
Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yeah.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we don't have any unfinished business, so we'll move to new business. Our first item is Promison.
Thank you for the opportunity of again coming and telling you a little bit. It's sad for me to come tonight to mention that Kayla's going to be leaving us. She did such a good job getting us a couple hundred thousand dollars from the Ballmer Group that they hired her. So, we appreciate the job she's done. We've come a long ways. They say that we have the most active Promison in the state. There's no other group that has any skilled trades program like we have, and so we have a number of things that we're doing. But I really hate to see her go, but obviously, she has the talent. She's been here seven years. I think it's significant that the first year when she came, they were doing about 500,000 in scholarships. We're right near 4 million right now for this spring, and we're not done yet. And Superintendent mentioned how many fewer students, up to a hundred fewer students than we had last year. So, they've done a terrific job with the scholarship program, and I'm really pleased with the job that Kayla has produced here. I would like to mention one additional thing. I've put on your desk there a mentoring program. We...one of the first things we realized is that students drop out pretty quick when they start college, in the first semester, first year. And so, this group...money that we got from the Ballmer Group, we hired Musa back, who was with us for two years. He was the outstanding Promison staff person in Michigan last year, and he's working, talking to the students as they go to college. His role will be to talk with these students during the year. He's already made contact with a community college and has talked to some of the other students who are already in the community college, and they have him a place where he can go and meet with students here in the Royal Oak Campus, which we're real pleased with. But one of the things that Leon LeBrecq, who used to be a school board member with me many, many years ago, and is on our board, has mentioned a number of times about doing a mentoring program. And so, we're attempting to get a mentoring program going here. I put on each of your seats here, in fact, one of the young men just handed me back an application to be a mentor. This is going to take probably two contacts, at least two contacts a month, whether it's phone or taking them to lunch if they're locally. I would hope that some of you might consider being a mentor, and we're looking...we already have, I think, about 35, 40 applicants already who want to have a mentor, and hopefully by the end of the semester, it'll be more closer to 100. But we're going to have on May the 2nd a training during the day, and also in the evening at 7 o'clock, from 7 to 8, on the 2nd of May, to train people to what's involved in being a mentor, to help our kids stay in school. You know, we work hard, getting them all the way through high school and through school here, and they start off in college, and, you know, they don't hang in there. And we feel like with Musa coming on staff, to be communicating with them, in fact, we've even...the board has set aside a small amount of money to help in emergency cases of new students that are getting started, if they need a special help of some kind. But we feel like this mentoring program, having one of the adults from our community to relating to these students, we feel that's really important. And we're doing the best we can, not only to get the scholarships, to get them there, but to have a program to continue afterwards, this first and second year. So, we don't know how this is going to go, but hopefully, we're making every effort we can, not only to get them there, but to keep them in school and to get them graduated. Likewise, it won't be just for kids going to college, but even in skilled trades, we'll have, hopefully, a number of skilled trade people working with those who are taking the skilled trades, whichever way it goes, and to help them stay where they're at to get the education they need. So, we'll keep you posted on what we're trying to do, but if you have, if you can help being a mentor, or you know someone that can be a mentor, please get their application in. It's May the 2nd. We're starting that during the daytime. It's a lunch, 11 to 2, or 7 to 8 at night. So, if you can help us, I think this is a critical factor in keeping our students moving ahead, not just getting through high school, but hopefully getting through college or getting through the skilled trades and getting a better job. So, we're trying to make the effort. Yes?
If you've already filled out your application, do you need to fill out another one?
No.
Okay.
Where are you planning on having this? It's going to be at the high school.
At the high school?
Probably in the library.
Library.
We've got to check that out. She and I were talking about that this morning, but we'll be checking. That's probably where it'll be. So, we're trying to give two different times, so whether you can make it during the day or in the evening, whatever works for you, we'll do that.
Bill, if you...we give this to anybody, who should they give it to now that with Kayla leaving?
Into the Promison head office in the high school.
Okay.
Give it to me, I'll get it in there, or one of the board members.
Rachel, I will be...so, I made sure I'm staying through that training, and so, for any of these applications, they can still send them to me or drop them off at the high school.
She'll only be with us till early in May.
Yep, so that week will be my last week.
So, if you can get it into us, we would appreciate it. If you can help us get more mentors. My goal is to have a mentor for every student going on to skilled trades or through the college, whatever it is. That's our goal, so we're making that effort. So, I've talked a little bit. Kayla has a few things to say as she's leaving, but she has done a phenomenal job. Hazel Park is recognized as probably the best Promison area in the state of Michigan right now, and so, we're proud of this lady. She's been here seven years, and she's done a terrific job.
Thank you. So, I...first, we'll give some updates. So, the...thank you to everyone who came to the Promison fundraising dinner. So, it was our sixth annual dinner and our most successful yet, so I know a number of you were there. We had some great speakers and some great students. We were very, very excited about everyone who was able to make it to the UAW Chrysler Training Center. Any students who are interested in summer Promison scholarships should reach...either reach out to me or Musa, who's our post-secondary success coach, and we can help get them set up, whether it's at OCC or another institution. We have a lot of students, as some of you know, that come back from the four-year institutions and take classes at OCC over the summer, and we're able to provide funding for that, even if they're not getting scholarship funding during the school year. As a reminder, Promison Scholarship eligibility now expires after six years after graduation instead of four years. So, that's something that if you do know someone who's recently gone back to school or wants to go back to school, they do have that extra two years of eligibility. It's still the same maximum scholarship funding, but over a longer period of time for students who might need it. We provided the second and final portion of the Promison Scholarship application last week to seniors, those who were in attendance for our college and career days. So, we will be sending it via email this week. That's the hard copy form that requires a signature. It allows the colleges to release their information to us, so we can pay bills, track data, stuff like that. College advisor, Ms. Burns, has copies in her office. We have copies at the high school, and then we'll also be emailing it out, like I said, so students can print it out. Mr. Traore, as Bill mentioned, has been meeting regularly with various Hazel Park alumni who are needing assistance with anything college-related. And honestly, every time I talk to him, I get more excited about the fact that he's here, because he's helping students through anything related to maybe an issue with their FAFSA that's kept them from enrolling, or issues related to whether they can still drop a class without it hurting their GPA, whether it makes sense to do this. Students who have been out of school but want to get back in, or who are interested in XYZ and don't know where to go to for that. So, previously, that was something that if students reached out to us, we'd help them with, but we weren't able to do this, like, very proactive outreach that he's doing now. And he shared with our board on Friday that he's met with or communicated in some way with about 80 students in the past month, and these are all Hazel Park alum who are either in school or wanting to get back in school. So, it's really pretty amazing already, so I'm excited about seeing where that goes. So, as the college and career days, as I mentioned, we had those last week. We worked with the high school administration to plan those, and they were held during testing. So, for non-testing students, we gave different college and career programming opportunities. So, on Tuesday, Ms. Burns, Maddie, our college advisor, and some of our talent search partners from Wayne State, presented various workshops related to study skills and life skills to students, while Musa Traore and I took a group of students to OCC. So, we took 34 students who are planning on enrolling at OCC in the fall. We'd actually had OCC out the week before spring break as well, so we're trying to make sure that they can get everything done by the end of the school year, related to application, FAFSA, creating an online student account, going through, like, the online orientation stuff, pretty much anything, while we still have this regular communication with them every day, just to make sure that any issues that come up are able to get dealt with pretty quickly. Then on Wednesday, we hosted five different career...well, actually, six career speakers. They were Anita Caponi, who's a surgical technologist at OCC, and she teaches in the self-health sciences program there. We were very excited to have her, because we have a lot of students interested in health sciences, but don't necessarily know about all the different opportunities available within that field. So, most of them say, "Oh, I want to go into nursing," and a lot of them will go into nursing, but some others might be interested in some of these other fields that OCC actually has really great programs for associate's degree that then can lead into some really good career opportunities. They have partnerships with Beaumont, so we were excited to have her. We had Jared Gageos from the Community Coalition, who's a Hazel Park grad, Jordan Twardy, who's the economic development director for the city of Ferndale. We had James Rigato, the chef at Mabel Gray, Kayla Shelton, who's a mechanical engineer, and Kyle Stuf, who's a digital marketing professional. He does social media marketing for different clients, and he's a Hazel Park alum as well. So, we were excited to host all of them. As Bill mentioned, our program launch for the mentoring program will be held on Thursday, May 2nd. So, as he stated, we'll have a...so, that's actually Decision Day is that morning, so the college advisor is planning Decision Day for that morning. So, we thought it would be a fun way to kind of continue for students who are going to take part in the mentoring program. We'll have, like, a pizza party lunch that will also be open to mentors, and it'll be that training as well. For mentors who aren't able to make that session, we'll have an evening session. And so, the idea is just to give kind of an overview to mentors, what's expected, advice, some different materials and guidelines, things like that. Also, I hadn't told Bill this, but actually, the current seniors are up to $4.1 million in scholarship offers. And so, to clarify, just so everyone understands, that's not Promison scholarships specifically, but those are scholarships that the college advisor is working with students and helping them to apply for different scholarships through their universities and elsewhere. So, they're at $4.1 million, which is a new record for the third year in a row, and yes, it's exciting. And we anticipate it'll keep going up, so probably, maybe we'll hit five by the end of the year. We'll see. But at $4.1 million right now. And then lastly, as Bill mentioned, I'll be transitioning out of my role, so I just want to thank all of you for all of your support over the past almost seven years, which I can't believe. I just feel so lucky to have been able to work with all of you and with some...I'm going to try to not get as emotional as I was with Bill and Ed Klobuchar last week when I told...when I talked to them about it. But just so many people here who are so committed to students and to the community. It's really been amazing, and I've completely loved working with all of you, and hopefully we'll still be able to work together in some way in the future. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because the board probably wants to get up and maybe do a handshake or something along those lines. Of course, we couldn't let you go without a small token of our appreciation to you for all that you've done for us, because Hazel Park and Hazel Park students are better off because of all the work you've done.
Thanks. Thanks so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
For sure. Definitely.
Enjoy. Good luck.
Thank you guys so much.
Good luck, Kayla. Send us lots of emails.
Sure.
All right, yes, Kayla will be missed. We thank her for her dedication, seven years, and watching the Promison grow and flourish and take form and shape, you know, has really been something to watch, so I'm excited about where we're at with it, and we'll see who they can get to fill those shoes. But we will go ahead and move on at this time to personnel recommendations.
We have to break them out.
Yeah, so, these are broken out to accommodate some of the conflicts on the board, so we're going to start with ASME. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the ASME personnel recommendations as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schlack?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. Next one is the HPASA Union. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion to approve the HPASA personnel recommendations as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schlack?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. Next one is the HPASA Union. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion to approve the HPASA personnel recommendations as presented.
Support. Any discussion?
I have a question. Dr. Croupy, since it's late in the year, and before you put Mr. Burnett there, this is a couple-week leave, will anybody be there for those few weeks or not?
We haven't made a decision yet. We've talked briefly about it, but we will put someone in place to make sure there's proper support. There will be someone.
I'm just concerned with the time of the year.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Absolutely. As are we.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schlack?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Next one is HPA, the teacher union. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion there, it's for the HPA Union Group.
Support. Any discussion?
Lots of retirement. You want to say something?
Yes, you know, we are hoping to invite our teachers to join us next month, so we can celebrate some of these retirements, but it is heartbreaking, yet celebratory for many of them, right, for their many years of service, so hopefully you'll have a chance to congratulate some of them that may join you next month. We're going to invite them to the meeting.
That'd be great.
Yeah, they're definitely...sorry to say someone retiring and excited that they start their new chapter, but very thankful for their service to this district. I'm so excited. All right, roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Schlack?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, next group is HPPA, the paraprofessionals. Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion that we accept the HPPA recommendation, personnel recommendations as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Schlack?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Abstained due to conflict.
Hammond?
Yes.
No?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Mrs. Hempel?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Atkins?
Yes. Next is IUOE, which is the secretary union. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion that we accept the IUOE recommendations as presented.
Support.
Go ahead, Mr. Hempel.
Discussion? Roll call.
Schlack?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. Unaffiliated, can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion that we accept the unaffiliated employees' personal recommendations as presented.
Support.
Oh, my goodness, Mr. Hempel.
My house would be like, jinx.
I know.
Okay, discussion.
Two cokes and you into this.
All right, roll call.
Schlack?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, that's it for personnel recommendations. Now we can move on to the administrative contracts. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion that we renew the administrative contracts as presented, second motion?
Yeah. Approving for the next calendar, 2019.
Yeah, I did not realize this date needed to be changed in the minutes, where it's like 2019 to 2020.
All right, yeah. But the contracts all have a date.
The contracts are correct.
Well, we'll table it until next month.
The contracts are correct.
She just loves me for that.
All right, did we get a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, discussion.
Yes, at this time, I feel that we should wait until next month. According to the record, this is only, at this month, it's considered a non-renewal contract month. So I feel that the month of May, plus also with everything else going on, that's my feeling, that we should just wait until next month, because of the consideration that all administrative are contracted from July 1st until June 30th. So it's like, for me, I, just the contracts, they can wait. We got more important things to worry about. This is just a renewal, I understand that, but at the same time, there's other issues that I feel that we have with it that are, I disagree with it waiting for, like I asked for last year, and we still never received those either. So I'd say no this month, so. And if the administrators feel that I don't support them at all, the way that I was told, then they feel that sometimes, then that's the way it is. But I talk to a lot of them, and I support. I mean, we support them 100% all the time. I mean, if they feel that way for this month, then okay, fine, I'll just live with that fact. You know, I support the teachers, support the administration, support the superintendent. That's what a board member's supposed to do, no matter whether we vote yes or no on any factor. So that's how I feel, sorry.
All right, I guess my only comment would be, are the evaluations done? Evaluations are not typically done till the end of the school year, is my understanding. So, go ahead, please.
So the, as of April 1st, you must give notice to whether or not you're going to not renew. So typically, a school district will approve contracts in March or April, and that's a timeframe that you're given through superintendent groups, through principal groups to renew your contracts. That's the guidance that you're given to renew those contracts. Evaluation's purpose is not to renew contracts, not to renew teacher contracts, but to give growth and for people to grow. Their grounds of evaluations are not, we create an evaluation to determine whether or not we're going to renew a contract. So evaluations for everybody will be completed closer to June, once all of the teacher evaluations are completed, and once we close out the school year, and they'll be completed before the end of the school year, before they leave.
Well, I have no intentions of seeing any of our administrators go, nor our teachers at this point, because there's no teachers out there to hire. So to me, we're going to be keeping an eye on everyone, so yay, it's great, we all win. But I would rather wait to make sure that the teachers' evaluations are done, and then the administrators, along with the principals. In the past, I've always asked to see the principals' evaluations, and was told that, you know, it wasn't my business, basically. But I think they all kind of go hand in hand. And so I, my feeling is, until they're done, we shouldn't be renewing contracts, because technically, if a teacher's evaluation is ineffective, and it's a procedure that we do, so if we don't follow procedures, then what's the point of having them? But usually, the teachers, their performance is based on their evaluation. A lot of them are put on improvement plans and all of that, and that's the way things work. So I think that it should follow suit with the administrators as well. So my feeling is, we know that we're going to renew the contracts, and I see you the evaluations as something that's coming later, and it's not something, you're right, that we have had some discussions about what we're able to see on that, and I would rather see us talk about evaluations separate than voting on the contracts. So I think we should vote on the contracts tonight. I don't know, I think waiting one or two months does not make a difference if we're going to approve them, and we, I'm happy to talk about evaluations at a workshop or a future, as a future topic. But don't they kind of go hand in hand?
No, once, if you have not, if you have not given notice by April 1st, you automatically are renewing their contract.
Well, I think that's what our plan is anyway, so if we wait, we wait. I'm just saying, we put policies and procedures out there, and we don't follow them.
Well, this is your policy that's in place, is that...
The policy is that we renew contracts before...
There is no policy about evaluation not, that contracts are renewed by evaluation.
I, I know, what I'm hearing is something different, is that contracts are not based on the evaluation. Evaluation is something for growth, and this is going to determine if we want to keep them as principal or not.
So if we were, if there was a reason not to renew someone, you would have been doing something very different, and they're based upon one-year contracts. And so all of them are eligible for the renewal of their contract, because we did not give them notice 30 days before the April 1 deadline. So it is, it is the will of the board to make that choice in your voting, to decide what you want to do.
I think it says May.
I think, we talked about this last year, I recall, the evaluation should come before the vote. It's kind, what do you call it, it's like protocol. You do the evaluation, you do the vote, there's a system to it. I totally support the principals. They love the district, they've been up here giving wonderful reports, so there's not, there shouldn't be any threat in that way. I just feel there's a, you know, the evaluation comes, and then the contract comes. It's kind, it seems backwards. This is backwards to me, but...
Yeah, I think the timing is challenging, but the, I think as, the evaluations are not meant to lead to the renewal. We're, you know, they're a personal growth thing, that is not the criteria... So that kind of goes with the teachers as well, though? If the teachers get bad evaluation, it renews their contract regardless?
So you could, it depends, so a teacher, so for example, and I think this is a great workshop for a school board association, for you guys to put on a topic for them, because for example, a teacher that's non-tenure, it wouldn't matter what their evaluation is, their contract, they could be renewed or not renewed based upon the opinion of a administrator, that's for non-tenure. For a tenured teacher, depending on what the rating is, it would take several years. So you could have a minimally effective or an ineffective evaluation and still be renewed, because you're a tenured teacher for several years. So it, let's say your evaluation was completed in June, or, which, we get them done by May, you would, if you had a minimally effective and you were a tenured teacher, you still would be teaching. Second year, you still would be teaching, and your contract would be renewed. It would only be the third year, and then there would be several actions that occur, and you would still be teaching before you would be removed. So there's different processes that are put into place. It is not in the same process, it doesn't necessarily wag the other one.
I'm comfortable with us being here, I'm comfortable with approving the contracts and letting it work like we have been in the past year, and again, having a workshop to discuss a little bit more about understanding. I don't see a policy and procedure that we're violating, so...
Your policy that's in, your policy is the non-renewal policy that says that you have to give notice by, that's the only policy that you have, is the non-renewal policy. That goes along with guidance from NEOLA that's put into place.
It says May 1st. Give notice by May 1st. April 1st, if a 30-day notice.
Yes, you have to give a 30-day notice.
30-day notice, but you give them 60 days prior, too, which is like on contracts, you give them 60-day notice to not renew them. That's where I'm getting at, is like, all of a sudden, this come out of nowhere, because I knew the rule, and it's like, okay, we renew them anyway, but it's like, why now? That's my issue.
Did it come out of nowhere, though? Isn't this the way we've been doing it for a number of years now? Are you sure it came out of nowhere?
Last year, I believe it was May.
I checked, last year was April, and the previous two years were June. So we have had some variation. Because of the 60-day notice, we'd be approving them anyway, so I guess I'm not sure why hold off on that, but...
Yeah, that's my opinion.
Here's another example, when Dr. Croupy's contract, the evaluation was supposed to be done in May or June or something, and then it went all the way to October, and we got off schedule. So if we did a couple times in June, it's like, you can't switch, it can't be May this month, and two years ago it was June, and it needs to be consistent, is my feeling, so...
So that's one of the reasons why we changed the cycle of the superintendent's evaluation, because the superintendent's evaluation is much different than administrator's evaluation. For the superintendent's evaluation, that was done to be completed so that when board members are going off the board, the board that's currently in place can do that final evaluation, and the new board members coming in in January had nothing to do with the contract, but the board members coming in are the ones that do the final evaluation, or the board members going out are the ones that do the evaluation. So if you remember that conversation, it had nothing really to do with the contract.
No, I know, I know why it was done and why it was changed that way. It's just that we sway from what we say. I know why we changed it, Dr. Croupy.
Was this one of the things that we agreed on, the board calendar?
I don't think so.
It's in the superintendent's calendar of what we do.
Okay, so it's not in the board calendar?
No, it's not on our board calendar.
We just act, what we do is we take what we've done a year before, and we bring it forth, so we're trying to be consistent with our calendars about what we do year to year.
Because it was always in May, and that's where we were. So, that's fine, I do it, and then call.
All right.
I just gave my reasons.
Okay, all right, roll call.
Excuse me. Schlack?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
No.
Mr. Hempel?
No.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel, or Mrs. Hempel?
No.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, moving on to curriculum, item D, summer school, so I don't know who, I think Ms. Postle's going to talk about it.
Do we need a motion on the board, on the table? Mrs. Atkins?
Is this an action item? Yes, let's take it. Can we get a motion for this?
We make a motion. We accept her presentation of the summer reading and math camp proposal.
Support.
Good afternoon, good evening. So I am here to request your approval for the summer reading and math camp for exiting third grader. We're looking at having the focus be those students that are exiting third grade at Hoover as far as entrance into the program. However, it'll be open to all students. We're planning to have a timeline, if approved, where parents of exiting third graders from Hoover are contacted and made aware that they'll have an opportunity to kind of have, similar to what we had last year, lit camp, but we're adding a math component, and we're choosing to focus on Hoover, just because there were a lot of changes with the third grade in particular. And so we are, I am here to ask for your approval of that. We're looking at using the same amount of teachers as last year, seven teachers, the same hours from 8 till 11:30. Free breakfast and lunch will be provided, and as you can see in the document that was provided, the total cost, which is about the same as it was last year. So I am here to answer any questions and ask for your approval, so that we can get these kiddos in leaving third grade some summer reading and math.
Where are you having this at? Are you having it strictly at Hoover?
Yes, it will be at Hoover.
And then are you advertising it with the other two elementaries?
Yep. So, well, yes, yes and no. First, we're going to, if it's approved tonight, we're already ready to go. The parents at Hoover will be identified and contacted to make them aware, and we have like a timeline. So say, for example, it'll start Wednesday till two weeks from now. Those people at Hoover will have access first, and after that, we'll open it up to the others.
Okay. So you're looking at how many students?
Well, about, with seven, we're looking at, what do we say, eight to 10 per seven teacher, so up to 70 students.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
And this is grant-funded?
Yes, this grant fund is out of 35A.
Thank you.
Good. You sure? Okay. All right, roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Schlack?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is Oakland County Budget Resolution. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the Oakland Schools 2019-2020 budget as presented.
My apologies, I forgot to bring the book.
Yeah, it's a massive binder.
I was kind of glad you were taking it.
Yeah, it was a massive binder, and reading through it, just love it. The numbers are just right there, that's up your alley, Jason, I didn't know you would bring. There was a few things that I seen that I had questions on, but being that Oakland schools had all their auditors and everyone in the world doing their book, I'd make a recommendation that we, as the Hazel Park Board of Education, support their budget for the 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Zernus, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Again, this is just a formality based on the revised school code. The state requires the LEAs within the county to pass a resolution of support or disapproval for their budget. There really isn't a lot going on this year in that budget. You know, they are projecting a 3.5% increase in property values, which will hopefully get back up to the pre-2010 levels in three or four years. Their general fund balance, one of the things that they are looking at is they're raising their minimum for their general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. The unassigned portion, they're looking at raising it half a percent over the next five years. Currently, they're at 15.3% of unassigned, which is pretty healthy. One of the other things in there that was kind of noticing from my standpoint is that they raised their FTEs for shared services going forward. They estimated 22 additional individuals that were going to be placed within districts. Again, there's no additional cost to the ISD, because they're just going to charge back to districts, but just an interesting tidbit of information in there. Their center program, one of the, I guess, one of the major trends in the center, the special ed fund was, the center programs, we've seen a bit of a decline over the last seven or eight years in enrollment, so districts are retaining their kids as opposed to sending them to the center programs. It's been relatively flat for the last three years, but again, we just have to be diligent in making sure that, you know, we get those referrals into our center programs, just so it's better for us to operate and keep the costs low. for us to operate and keep the costs low. The more students, obviously, the costs are going to come down per student. And again, their special education fund has been consistent at 5% of their expenses after LEA transfers. So, all in all, it's a pretty, it's a pretty decent budget.
Did you, did you notice in the, in the front portion of the book where they show their, their amount, where their intake was 33.5 million, or 335 million?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty, no, 35 million was their coming in, and then the revenue, and their expenditure was somewhere in the range of 37. Did you see that?
Yeah, I think there was a typo. I think they, they had a balanced budget, I believe, that was 337.5 million.
So they must have put the numbers in the.
Yeah, revenues and expenses were the same.
Right.
Because again, I think I pulled my, my numbers from one of their memos, but then when I went back into the actual budget book, it's, it is.
That's where I thought was some discrepancy.
Again, you're, you know, there's a lot of numbers in there.
Yes. Trying to go through that book is like.
Jason, I'm not sure if you can answer this before Dr. Croupy. Since you kind of spoke about the center programs and remaining flat for the last few years, how do we retain or seek out those referrals? Are, do the other districts in Oakland County send those into the ISD and then they send them over to us? Or do, can we send something out to the other districts letting us know about our awesome programs and how they can be beneficial? What do we do to kind of maybe advertise a little bit better?
I think we should let Tamara speak to that.
Sorry.
But, but she's got to come up to the microphone. Ah-ha.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to crash your.
No, 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 that's important, that, that's a really good question, that's important to.
Tamara, do you need me to ask it again? I do, please, I'm so sorry. That's okay. The question is, Jason, you have a good point about how we remain flat in our, some of our center program enrollments. In looking at building our programs and building capacity within those, how are we looking at growth? How do those referrals come in to us from the ISD? Are they, can a district refer right into us? Do they have to go through the ISD? Those types of, how do we increase our base?
Sure. So every referral for Jardon and Edison go through, it's a DSR, District Service Request, and it goes through Oakland Schools. So a home district, Oak Park, let's say, says I want to send so-and-so to a center-based program, they submit that DSR through Oakland Schools, and then it comes to our center-based programs.
So how do the other school districts in our county, and this might be a question for the ISD then, know about our programs? And are they referring them? Are they, do they know about the awesome things that we are doing? I think it's great to hear Megan's presentation about the greenhouse and then was it the work programs and different things like that? Do the other districts know that we're putting, I guess, a notch above the breast and trying to get those kids into services that can help them?
So she was just at CIOC, which is the Special Administration Administrators in Oakland County. We meet every month at Oakland Schools. That took place last Friday. I had to stay back for some meetings here, but, so she presented on Jardon. And so what they do is they have four breakout sessions at CIOC every afternoon, and so Megan was one of four breakout sessions.
Okay.
And she brought pamphlets for, and you have to go, like, to every breakout session. And so she presented on the programming, the greenhouse, the CBI trips, the work sites, the staffing, you know, all the highlights that you saw here, she presented on at CIOC last Friday. And she was actually told that, it sounds like, hopefully, there are going to be four students in the ASD program in the fall, a potential of six in our MOchi program. But we have to wait until we actually have, like, the referral in hand and the IEP team has said yes, parents have said yes, guardians have said yes, they've toured the program, and the decision is final. So we have to wait until we actually have referrals in hand. But she did go out, she did present, and it went really well, I was told.
I'd be curious to see what Oakland Schools does when Edison Maxville needs backup and running, like, increasing those referrals since they've done a lot of money into that.
So Dr. Kraus has sent a few emails out to directors, the same group, CIOC group, saying, hey, here's our, we're going to be opening a post EI program. What might be your interest level? Might you be sending us some students? So that goes out to every Oakland County administrator, just to kind of see where the interest might be. I think she said a couple directors say yes, we're going to be sending, you know, so-and-so, but that's referral-based as well. So we don't know until we, until we know. Yeah.
Okay, that's great. No, thank you. I have a better understanding.
And we met today, and we sat down and we went through our projections for next year, how many students, how many staff, how many incoming students we're projecting, what that looks like. But Jai also shared with me that at the same time, while we are doing presentations about our programs, they are also doing presentations about how to keep your kids within your own school district.
Yes.
So there's that constant challenge about how to grow Jardon, at the same time wherein there's presentations being done about how to keep your kids at home. So that's, that's that balance about when you're running center programs.
I have an off-beat question. I noticed in the, in her update that they want to change the name from an EA to an AG, I believe it is?
Oh, no, the, the originally.
Or EL or?
Originally, there was an ASD program, and they no longer want us to do an ASD program, but an EI program there. So we already run an EI program there, and so there's no need any longer for an ASD program because other programs have built, other school districts have built programs within their own. So they're asking us to make, to add those three extra classrooms to be EI, because our program is already full, actually. And so those three classrooms would take carryover to additional EI students.
Okay. That's what it is. Thank you.
All right, anything else on the budget resolution?
Oh, no, I don't know if Jason had anything else to say. Thank you, Tamara.
You're good, you shared. All right, well, thank you for giving us some tidbits. I need to read the resolution. Should I do that?
Which one, the one to approve or disapprove?
Well, oh yeah, should we vote first and then I'll read it? Are we approving it? We're approving it.
The motion was to approve, and we have support on the table. I don't know, I guess yeah, we should vote it through.
Let's go ahead and, let's roll call, and then I'll read it.
No?
Yes.
Schlapp?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, ISD budget resolution, whereas Section 624 of the Revised School Code as amended requires the intermediate school board to submit its proposed budget no later than May 1st of each year to the board of each constituent district for review, and not later than June 1st of each year, the board of each constituent district shall review the proposed intermediate school district budget, shall adopt a board resolution expressing its support for or disapproval of the proposed intermediate school district budget, and shall submit to this intermediate school board any specific objections and proposed changes to the constituent district board has to the budget. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education has received and reviewed the proposed intermediate school district budget in accordance with Section 624 of the Revised School Code as amended, and by the adoption of this resolution expresses its support for the proposed intermediate school district budget. The Secretary of the Board of Education and his or her designee shall forward a copy of this resolution to the intermediate school board or its superintendent no later than June 1st. All resolutions insofar as they conflict with this resolution be, and the same are hereby rescinded. So the resolution is declared adopted, so. There we go. All right, let's move on to the next item, which is the St. John's Health. Can we get a motion?
Motion to approve the improvements to the Hazel Park High School as necessary to renovate the space to accommodate the new St. John Health Center as presented.
Support.
And who's speaking to this? Are you Mr. Zernis? All right.
So we've met several times with the architects and St. John representatives to go through the available space at the high school. St. John's is currently in a temporary space. Dr. Croupy, I'm not sure what.
The old counseling office.
The old counseling office. We'll move them down the hall and around the corner. It's going to take some costs, obviously, to renovate the space and get it into a, get it into shape for a health clinic. We've met with St. John's, and they're willing to come forward and provide us with finish work, painting, tiling, and the casework. We're going to have our maintenance custodial staff go through and do a lot of the demo in order to save us money. But we'll still have to have a contractor come in and do the mechanical, fire alarm, you know, you know, take out a couple walls, move a few doors. So what we're proposing is, is the remaining funds, not to exceed 185,000, be designated from the sinking fund to complete the project.
I do have a question.
Yep.
We're using the old back shop room, one of the welding, something? No? No.
There's, go ahead.
Go ahead.
There's, we're using a piece of the, I think it's the old welding room. There's a, there was a small classroom that was designated out of the corner, and which will probably become a conference and separate meeting area.
Do they have a entrance in and to and out of the school without actually coming into the school?
There's going to be an entrance. There isn't, there's, there's two doors currently. One's going to be an emergency exit, one's going to be the main entrance. And part, again, part of the renovation of the space is the current door that leads into the space has to be flipped over so that both doors enter into a reception area for security for that, you know, for the standpoint of you don't want a reception area and people coming in from, you know, unseen areas. So there's just some movement of some doors.
So it will be secured for our students at the high school as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Is this going to start in the summer?
Well, again, we, we have to, once we get your approval, we have to submit, well, we have to actually put the plans together, then submit them to the state for approval. Then we have to bid it out because of the magnitude of the project. Because it's a self-contained space within the high school, I think we'll be able to do this over the school year without any interruption within the classroom space. So again, it's going to be a project that we're probably going to work towards completion by the end of the year or soon thereafter.
So have the, currently, students within the high school can receive services, but no one outside of the high school can receive services because we're not in that isolated space. So we currently are receiving those services. Anyone in the high school can receive services from St. John in the counseling office. So we have a wide variety of services, and that's been communicated by Mr. Daly out through paperwork and through to the students. But unfortunately, we cannot bring it up to full scale until we get this completed. Very exciting.
It is.
All right. Any other comment or questions? All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schlapp?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, next item is enrollment update. So Dr. Croupy, what do we, what do?
This is just a continually gathering to you enrollment update that we will continue to give to you so that you can see enrollment as it continues.
So is this enrollment, this is enrollment for next?
No, this is.
This is current, right?
This is current.
Current. We don't have Jardon or Edison or Advantage listed in these numbers?
Actually, this doesn't look like it's correct.
That's what I was thinking.
I was, like, that's a big drop, but they saw a lot of zeros, so.
It's not correct.
Okay. Could you follow up and just?
I will, and I'll get the new one. I'll send it to you and put the new one up, the correct one up.
I wasn't expecting a whole lot, but that just looked like, didn't look right.
That's not right.
Yeah, it didn't look right.
All right, that moves us on to superintendent update. Dr. Croupy, do you have anything else, of course?
I don't. I will have that in administrative comments.
Okay, let's move to board member and administrative comments. We'll start on the side of the table.
I just want to say thank you to Megan for the Jardon presentation. It was really nice to hear about all the great things happening there. Amazing news once again, year through year, about this prom zone and the amount of scholarships that our kids continue to earn and get. So, such a great, great, great news, especially with the post-secondary support that we're now able to give out to these kids. I think that's really, really important. And also, great news about the clinic. I think that'll be really helpful to some of our students that require need and maybe don't have insurance or, you know, don't have the resources to go and be treated or vaccinated or all the things that they're going to be offering, so.
Mrs. Hempel?
I want to just wish Kayla the best of luck in her new adventure. She left, but I do wish her well. I want to tell the administrators, I support all of you, and I appreciate all your hard work that you do, as well as the teachers, you know, I appreciate our whole staff, and that's about all I got right now.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I don't know if this is our shortest meeting on record. We all can wrap it up here.
Wait, let's start it up.
I know, I know, Chuck.
So do I.
So thank you for, everyone putting in their hard work day in and day out for our students. And everyone, please have a safe, good Friday and happy Easter this weekend with your families. This is a time where, hopefully the next few weeks, we'll start to see leaves and flowers and all the beautiful things coming back into your flower beds and around the city. So hopefully you feel a little more energized as we go into the last couple months here of school and the graduation season and all of our end-of-the-year activities. So be safe and enjoy your, your time with your family, and, and this time to reflect about what you want to do in the next few months as we get closer to warm weather.
All right, this side. Dr. Croupy, do you want to?
Sure, I have a few things. One, I was fortunate enough to attend the city council meeting last week where they started to talk about the Julian ordinance, and I think that's an important thing for us to kind of be aware of, that is the first bit of Julian presentation here. And there is a first reading of the ordinance that we hope will be put in place to help us facilitate that within our schools, to make sure that's a safe environment. Yes?
If I remember correctly, that was to mirror the current tobacco ordinance?
It's, it's to mirror the current tobacco ordinance. So there will be fines put in place if you're doing that inside of a school environment, in the community, but if you're under 18, but also in the school environment. So look forward to reporting back to you the final results of that. I think that's an important thing inside our schools. And it's mirroring what's happening in school communities all around us. I too want to thank Kayla. She's been an outstanding asset to the school, and I will be working collaboratively with them as they are looking for the next steps, and I will report back to the school board. But she's going to be hard to replace. She's a bright, shining star. I also want to continue to report how exciting it is to receive the safety grant, but also the Amazon classes. So thank you to our team to get the Amazon classes, and we'll report to get those in place. Really proud to continue to receive outstanding grants here in Hazel Park to add and continue to grow in our school environment. So we're really proud to report to that. And congratulations to our PBIS teams as they'll be honored next week at the statewide PBIS conference for their wonderful attributes as they continue to do the work for PBIS throughout the state.
Yay. That's good news.
That is great news. We are also losing another one of our fabulous staff members as Samantha will be moving on from our food service, and she's accepted a job in another school district, and she got stolen away. And she was out reporting about our breakfast program. Another school district approached her and offered her a job, and so we lost another wonderful, outstanding staff member. And so we'll be interviewing for that replacement as well. So it's hard to see our great, wonderful employees go, but we wish her well as, as well. And I'm very grateful that you approved the St. John Clinic. We've been working on that now for two and a half years to get that back after losing it, and so we're really going to look forward to that in the next year. I was able to attend angst last week, so thank you very much to the Hazel Park Coalition and Youth Assistance. They gathered together to show the movie, also provide a wonderful dinner. I was grateful to have a wonderful piece of pizza. I was starving after that. But really a great reflection, if you haven't seen that, to talk about the anxiety that exists within our, our youth and our even adulthood, and really reflect on what we're doing sometimes to our students and those around us to really think about how we need to look at life differently. And if you haven't seen some posts in the newspaper article about our students attending Hamilton last week, we were wonderful to write for a grant. Dr. Pastel, I believe you were able to attend, right, Mr. Daly? But our students were able to go to Hamilton, and out of, I think, what, 25 groups? Ours were one of the 10 that were able to get up and present and perform. And a wonderful article that was out there, and just, Dr. Pastel, thank you for sharing that. We're continually proud of our Hazel Park students. There's just wonderful, wonderful things happening in Hazel Park, and couldn't be more proud. And thank you, school board. I will be thinking of you this week, and great things happening in Hazel Park.
Could I jump in right here? The, the safety grant, I got a call today. Could you talk a little bit about how the swipe card is allowing safety?
So the swipe card allows safety so you don't have the keys, right? So there's time periods and you're swiping versus the keys, so you don't have all those keys out there. And when people leave, sometimes they leave with their keys. You're now able to turn off that access. And so it's a much safer environment. You know, when you have keys and, keys and doors, and people leave and they've got those keys, or somebody loses those keys, now those keys are running around in a door. When you have a swipe access, you now can lock out people when they leave. And so think about your safety. You've got, for years and years, you've got keys that are out there where people have walked away and they can get in at any point in time.
Lock your key.
Yes, well, I didn't say that.
Rosie's favorite group, the clean, the locking key.
One of the first things that people often do in those safety pieces, we already have the cameras, and those other things, but those swipe cards are definitely a huge safety issue that school districts put into place.
Thank you.
And we've been talking about it, right, for four years, since I came initially. So we're grateful that that's one of the steps that we can put. There's more to come, but that is one of the first steps. So we're grateful. And not everyone, I met with superintendents this morning at the legislative breakfast, and not everybody was able to get that opportunity. So we're really grateful that we dotted our i's, crossed our t's, and signed on the dotted line and got that grant.
Yay.
Thank you, Jason.
In my administration, there's a lot of work on whether principals and getting their EOPs up to date. So there's a lot of work.
All right, Ms. Hammond?
I just want to say happy Easter to everyone, and thank you for coming out. We have a couple students here that came to this board meeting for credit in their class. Thank you.
Well, lucky then.
All right, Mr. Hempel?
No, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. Good, happy Easter to all. And I do support all our administrators and our teachers, practically all the staff. I feel like they're all family, so, you know, even though Dr. Croupy don't like me calling them family because they're her employees, so.
I don't believe I've ever said that.
So other than that, everyone have a great week, and we'll see you next month.
That's all you have to say, Jeff?
All right, Mrs. Hinton. Thank you to everybody for coming out. And, you know, there's wonderful things, it's continuous. You see it in the CNG. If you don't have Facebook, you need to get, get up to speed there and go on the Hazel Park site. But yeah, it's continuous, good things going on and moving forward, and it's the end of the year, hard to believe that, too. It's, the time just flies. So have a good night. I, I don't have anything to add other than I, I forgot to plug the marching band sign-up when Melanie was up there. So she was talking about the golf event, but this Thursday is marching band sign-up. They're already starting to plan those fall activities because marching band starts and goes all summer. So I think it's seven o'clock at the high school, and they've been starting to promote that. And so that's all I had, was a plug for that. So with that, can I get a?
Motion.
There it is.
Support.
All right.